Okay, awesome. Call me in order, please stand for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Board member Parker is unable to attend today, so there will be four of us today, so we have a quorum in person. Nobody was signed up, I believe, to address the board. So move on to approval of the minutes held July 8th, 2020. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
A motion second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Moving to approval agenda, Dr. Griggs has asked if we could move item 9A above 8A. If that's okay, do I have a motion to approve that change with the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion second. All those in favor of the new agenda with 9A above 8A signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. The agenda is approved with those changes. No new conflicts of interest who presented. Move on to the consent agenda with items 7A through D. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. We will now go to the first reading of Southeast Tech policy.
Thank you. Good afternoon, President Mickelson and members of the board. Appreciate the opportunity to visit with you this afternoon. We have first initiative, it's actually 9A, and it's the Title IX policy revision from our current policy. The change is required by a change in federal law, and because of that change, all colleges and universities that are receiving federal financial aid funding are required to adhere to these new standards. And so it's a change that in the middle of the COVID pandemic was being worked on and was released, and we started working on it actually several months ago as far as we were aware, we needed to change our language. But it's a fairly complex policy from what we originally had, and because of the complexity, we were advised by some representatives at our sister institutions to maybe receive some assistance and help in that regard from a professional association called ATICSa, or the Association of Title IX Administrators. They're considered the preeminent higher education professional association for Title IX administrators. These are individuals that have the good fortune, I guess, if you can call it that, to have the luxury of working full-time on just Title IX issues. And so that association has been working very hard in helping higher ed respond to these new federal mandates. And so the policy that you see in front of you, actually there's a policy and also a process in terms of a regulation as to how we'll implement that policy that we bring for you today. And I've asked Tracy Nolder, Tracy, as you may remember, has been our, for a number of years, has been our executive director of student affairs at Southeast. He's also been our compliance officer and our Title IX officer and has done a very, very good job with that. And so Tracy, even though he retired at the beginning of July here, he has continued to help us work through the processes of revision and adopting this new policy that you see before you. So I've asked Tracy to come forward and we'll visit with you a bit about the policy, and then if you have questions, we'll try our best to answer those as well. So, thank you.
Tracy. So I don't know, can you hear me okay? Okay. So, all of this started a long time when Title IX was first created, and they found there were some issues with how things were being done in the colleges. If you think before Title IX really started going, it seemed like things weren't being ignored. No one was paying attention, the female was coming in frequently, there was a female coming in and she has some kind of sexual misconduct case, and they just kind of slid it, they didn't really do much with it. So then Title IX came and said, no, 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 that's not appropriate, you need to address these and you need to address them fairly. And so then they came with the Title IX. What happened with Title IX to some degree is it started swinging the pendulum the other way. All of a sudden, they were kicking the male student out without barely even hearing the inside of the story, and they said, that's not what we meant. You can't just make decisions blindly, you have to go through a process to make sure this is fair and equitable for both the complainant and the respondent. That prompted the new policy and the new regulation. It came out, but it's not something you can just read, it's 2,000 pages long, and you can't just read it and quite figure out exactly what you're supposed to do. So ATICSa put their people on it, they didn't release a final version of it until just very recently. Our sister institution out at Western Dakota spent a ton of time on this, Kelly Olerking, it's just, she knows this really well. She changed it to fit into their language, and then she allowed us to receive what she did. So she basically took ATICSa, made it into what worked at Western Dakota, provided it to us so we could see what would work for Southeast Tech. There isn't a lot of leeway anyway. You can't do a whole lot, you have to follow the regs, and the regs are really pretty strict on what you can get to. The good part about this whole thing is that before, you could have an issue that you had to use Title IX, you had to use the Title IX policy, even though it didn't really fit. It was too much, it really didn't need to be done that way, but because it came in that way, you had to use it. What happens with this new policy is that once anything comes in, whether it's some kind of discrimination, some kind of harassment, or some kind of student code of conduct, that's serious in nature, it goes directly to the Title IX coordinator first. Then the Title IX coordinator looks at it and says, yes, this fits into Title IX, we have to use this process. But if they look at that and they say, you know what, this is really a different kind of discrimination, or this is a different kind of harassment, not based on sexual harassment, or maybe they determine this is just code of conduct, they can take it out of that stream and use whatever policy is appropriate. That's what was missing before, you couldn't do that. So now, it puts a lot of pressure on the Title IX coordinators to know what they're doing, but it's very, very good in terms of the student and in terms of college, in that we're not having to fit everything in a box that doesn't make sense. The bad part about the new Title IX, and you can say whether it's bad or good, but there is a lot of stuff that has to be done. There's just a tremendous amount of work involved, there's investigation. The biggest change is there's a hearing, and the biggest issue with the hearing has been that the respondent and the complainant have the right to cross-examine the witnesses. The issue with that has always been, if I am the complainant, I don't want the respondent asking me questions about our encounter. The way they got around that is to say the respondent and the complainant cannot answer the question. Both have to have an advisor present. They can choose their own advisor, that advisor could be a lawyer, or it could be a friend, or it could be someone at Southeast. If they don't have one, we provide somebody to be that advisor. It is only the advisor who can ask the questions. The second thing they did is they said they can be in two separate rooms, or two separate locations, and do it in a more of a remote distance type. And the third thing they did is the hearing conductor, the person who's in charge of the hearing, once the question is asked, the hearing person decides if the other person has to answer it, and certain things are not included. You can't automatically discuss a person's previous sexual experiences, that may not be appropriate to the situation. So there are certain questions that you can say, nope, you can't ask that question, or you can say, you need to reword it into something that fits into this case. I don't know if you have other questions, that's basically the, there's a lot of changes, so we have to go through line by line to show them all. But basically, in terms of what Southeast can do, there isn't a whole lot. I mean, we're pretty much this is what it is. I will tell you, probably in a few months, you're going to have us coming, or somebody coming back here again with new changes. It is not done yet, there's going to be some additional things that are going to happen with that policy and some additional changes. So don't think that this is going to be the end-all, end-all, it's certainly going to change, maybe frequently, hopefully not, but as they start getting cases and they start working on situations, they're going to come up with additional changes. So, in a nutshell, that's what it is, and the whole idea is to make sure that everyone is treated fairly. A couple of the changes I would mention that are good changes, too. The complainant has to be someone somehow connected to Southeast. So the very first thing is the complainant must be connected, it could be a prospective student, or it could be a current student, but they have to have a connection right there then. It can't be an alumni student who tells us five years later that recently they had an encounter, that it's got to be something tied. The other one that really changed is that if the respondent leaves the institute, the institute does not have to continue with the Title IX investigation. That may be something the complainant will get upset about, but literally, there's nothing else we can do because that's, that's what the law says, is once they leave, that's it, there's no more investigation for us.
Yeah, it's outside the jurisdiction, and they still have civil or criminal abilities outside
Exactly.
to examine those issues.
Yep, yep, they can still go a different route, but we just don't have the ability.
Well, once again, I feel like we're repeating ourselves because we're all dealing with a lot of heavy stuff here lately. This has been a lot of work, I know, and Tracy, thank you for coming out of retirement to help Southeast Tech through this, because with your historical knowledge of what Southeast Tech was and where we're going with this, is very helpful to us. And I know that Dr. Griggs has reached out to Dr. Stavum to see if Brett Aaron's, our in-house counsel, can help with this transition as well, which is great to get that experience on that with us. I think, and your point, I think, is it August 14th, these are all supposed to be
It's August 14th, exactly.
As a deadline, so, but it was just released, was it June, or the new standard?
Actually, ATICSa did not get theirs out until middle or second week or third week of July.
Yeah.
So, it's a rush to do this. The other thing is, keep in mind that a lot of colleges, they don't have a first, three, second, they don't have that. It's just an automatic, you bring the policy and the policy is, once they review it, it goes into effect. So it puts us in an awkward situation
Box, yeah.
because we don't have enough time from July to September. We have to have this in place by August 14th.
Yeah, so I appreciate the quick work and turnaround, and that we need to do this immediately to do this, and the, this still gives the public time to make some comments, and I agree, as soon as this goes into motion, it's going to be changed in some manner, because we will figure out that there are some, you know, nuances that need to be made, or things that aren't working in this, so that we can adapt to that as well. So, any questions for Tracy?
No, I just think this is very reflective of kind of the environment that we, that we live in now, and there's going to be new policies and recommendations coming to protect as many people and institutions as they can. So sometimes the intention is very good, but then you say 2,000 pages, and it's like, oh, how are we ever going to implement this?
Yeah, exactly.
So, I think it's just going to be one of those things that it's new, and we'll get through it and figure it out, and hopefully have very minimal need to use the policy, would be the goal.
That'd be the goal.
But
And I will say, that's, that is one of the most positive things about it, is that I do believe there's a majority of cases, because you do have one other option, and that is, if the complainant says, I don't want to go through that, I just want to have some remedies, and you go to the respondent, and you say, are you willing to abide by these remedies, it can end there. You don't even have to go through this. So unless you have a really, really huge case, and obviously there's cases where, if it could be breaking the law.
Right.
Obviously, that's different. But I think a lot of cases could be solved just by working out the details. It could be simply moving from this storm to this storm, or this person never talks to me again. There's a lot of options you can use without using that whole process.
That's good. Yeah, so thank you for the work, and, you know, we just need to get it kind of on the books so that we have it in place, and then, as you mentioned, it will be an ever-changing, I'm sure. So we'll talk to you about it again soon.
Yeah, sounds good. All right.
And so for the public, then the next reading we'll have at the September board meeting, if it's correct, and then we'll be finalized on that. But basically, it's tentatively adopted.
If it's tentatively adopted on there, it's on the books.
Yeah.
I don't think anyone's going to come out, and literally, unless you, if you don't have a case in the next month anyway.
Yeah.
They're never going to go back and say, well, you didn't have, that's not the issue. But at least, we've got to have something out there to say, yes, it's to this level.
Okay, do I have a motion to tentatively adopt that first reading of the new policy regarding JICK and STI and JICK dash R, STI, Student Sex Gender Harassment Discrimination and Misconduct?
So moved.
Second.
A motion second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. On to the next report. Thank you, Tracy.
Yeah, thank you, Tracy. I'd like to recognize Tracy for all of his many, many years of service, and he could have easily not returned my phone calls and emails, and I think we would have been very, very, even worse concerned than we are, but appreciate your help and assistance with this as we continue to work on the policy adoption. The next item that we have is related to a visit just two weeks ago, I think. We were privileged to have Superintendent Stavum come out to campus and visit with myself and members of our leadership team, and we thought it might be beneficial to share some of the slides that we shared with Dr. Stavum with the board in terms of, again, some of the past successes we've had, in terms of partnership and collaboration. It is such an important relationship, it is vital, I feel, for our students and for our success, and for our region in terms of workforce development, to have a very close working relationship. And we are part of the Sioux Falls School District, but I think even more important than that is that relationship and being able to build pathways and options for students. So we're very excited about opportunities that we have been able to go forward with in the past, and we have some new ideas, and we are very, very early on in many of these conversations. But again, we thought it might be a good opportunity before the year starts, and we get tied up with the new year and all of the planning and work that goes on with that to lay out some of those opportunities. So Dr. Valdez is going to visit with you and cover some of those slides, and then we'll try our best to answer any questions that you have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, President Griggs. President Mickelson, members of the board, thank you for this opportunity to speak today. Again, we had the honor of having Dr. Stavum come visit us on campus and have, and start a conversation about the continued relationship and partnership between Southeast Tech and the Sioux Falls School District, and we wanted to, again, share this information with you. One of the first things we want to talk about is some of, some of our stats, and kind of where we're at. Fall of 2019, we started the year with 2,456 students. As you can see from our fact sheet, we, it's something that we are doing on a yearly basis. I think that's important to point out because that is an increase of 8.3% from the previous year. So we are on a trajectory of enrollment growth and doing very well. A lot of the enrollment growth came from two very interesting areas. The first area is dual enrollment and dual credit, working in stronger collaboration with the high schools to engage high school students a lot earlier and get them to start taking classes. That to us is extremely important because it starts to address some national issues. Number one is movement forward, that students are starting to see there is this opportunity to complete college, move on to college, and earn college credit while still in high school. But the other component is also helping reduce the exorbitant national debt that our students are taking on by going on to college. Anything that we can do to help them and engage them early, keep them moving forward, and have them moving from secondary into post-secondary is important to us. The other issue that we saw, or the other area of growth, was in part-time students. And I think we're starting to see more and more families, more and more students that start to see the opportunity of, well, I have a family, I have work, I can't go to school full-time. So being able to provide those options, that they have different formats, online, evening, and being able to engage, and being able to complete courses is important. It may take them a little longer, but hey, they're staying engaged and being able to move forward. So we're very excited about that. The other thing we want to talk about is something that we're really not good at, and that's being able to talk about our accolades and some of the awards that we received. This last year, we, for the second time, were ranked by the Aspen Institute in the top 152-year colleges in the United States. We were very excited about that, we think we've had some tremendous growth, we're learning from this experience, and we're seeing how we can improve so that next time we're even higher and higher until we, until we win it. So we're really working hard on that. This year, for the first time, the Prokings Institute recognized Southeast Tech. Southeast Tech ranked number eight out of 596 two-year colleges for economic mobility. We see that as a great investment in our education and in what we're doing at Southeast Tech. We wanted to highlight that. The other one is from the guide to online schools. Again, Southeast Tech was ranked number eight in the nation and number one in South Dakota for online colleges and online programs, something, again, we're very excited about, and something that we want to promote and let students know, we have options for meeting your needs, especially in South Dakota where we have a lot of rural communities, being able to reach out to them, engage those students as well. Our workforce is our primary mission and our primary focus, and one of the things that we've continued this last year is our, is a focus on our workforce within our community and within our Sioux Falls region. That involves us being very collaborative with industry. The collaboration is not just with industry, it's with the district, it's with CTE, it's with the chamber, it's with the city of Sioux Falls. It has been a very collaborative work effort. To make that happen, we hosted 14 events on campus. Each of these events focuses on a specific industry within our region, healthcare, transportation, construction, information technology, agriculture. We even had the high school counselors out for a very specific engagement with the high school counselors, the state legislature, we had an interaction with them, working with them, and it really was to figure out what we're doing, what we may be missing, and how, how we can improve. Where do we need to go? What are the changes? What are the trends in industry? The nice part about Southeast Tech and how we work within our relationship with the school district and the Board of Technical Education is, we are able to pivot quite easily. We're able to make these changes and really meet the needs for workforce. So we continue to do that. Now, hosting these breakfasts were important to us, and it wasn't just to pay lip service to hear industry and our community say, hey, we want this. We actually moved forward with a lot of those initiatives. Construction, we heard from our construction industry that we need to focus more on the hands-on component of construction, and we want small certificates, because we need a workforce, and we need a workforce that has basic skills and training. So we developed our construction certificates. The healthcare industry, huge here in Sioux Falls, they came forward and said, we need a medical assisting program. We need to be able to get those students to a level where we can use them, that they have a very specialized function, a scope where they can really be of value to us within healthcare industry. We started our diploma in medical assisting. South Dakota being an agricultural state, we had nothing really to do with agriculture, other than our agriculture program. We were able to start within our business program an emphasis on ag, in agriculture, providing students that opportunity to work on a different level, work within the banking and industry that supports our agriculture here in Sioux Falls. Our telecommunication towers technician certificate program, great effort, we put a lot of time into that. Senator Thune, the FCC commissioner was out on campus, we held hearings regarding the expansion of our infrastructure with the telecommunication. We started a telecommunication tower technician program. That's something you're going to find me doing it. Four or five stories in the air, but hey, it was, it was a great opportunity for, to be able to meet our workforce needs. Our dental assisting, vet tech are going, and again, working with our healthcare industry to meet the needs for paramedics within South Dakota. So we're starting that program this coming year. So we're really trying to step up. Again, collaborating closely and really being a partner with the district. We want, we wanted, we again received for the third time what was supposed to be a one-year grant, ended up being a three-year grant. First year, $250,000, second year, another 250. This last year, the third year, $200,000 in grants, totaling $700,000 coming to Southeast Tech and the district to really promote our CTE academy, engage students, and get them working towards career and technical education. We also work closely with the district on our, our summer construction pre-apprenticeship program. Little disappointed this year, we had this pandemic that threw a wrench, that we weren't able to run that program, even though we, we tried to get very creative, we just weren't able to make it happen because of the COVID situation. But the pre-apprenticeship program, we're already starting that planning for next year and working with AGC, with the home builders, and with the district, with CTE, to make sure that these, this opportunity is still there, and these students have the ability to move forward within that, that trade and that field and earn college credit. We also hosted the Skills USA competition. Unfortunately, because of the pandemic, that was also canceled on campus, but they, they were able to do some additional events. But again, a great partnership for the last few years between us and CTE. Last year, over 280 technical college and high school students came to campus and participated and competed in events that really highlighted their success and what they are doing within their, their, their individual programs. One of our biggest focuses has been on dual credit, again, engaging high school students early. How do we get them to see the value? We have a huge percentage of our students that do not feel college is in their future. They may, they may not feel they have the funding, they may not have the aptitude. That's all false. We want to break down those barriers. That's been a tremendous collaboration between us and Sioux Falls School District through the Avera Academy, Careers to Classrooms, and that bringing a partnership of both Sanford, First Premier, and the city all together to really engage students. The second year that this, where we went on, I mean, second semester was even greater in success from the first semester. We're very excited, it's going forward into the next year, school year, both Sanford and Avera, the city, First Premier, all supporting and pushing at this collaboration, this engagement on these first-generation, low-income students, that they have this opportunity, and that we can continue to move forward. One of our priorities is to really focus on first-generation diversity and inclusion at Southeast Tech. We continue to monitor and really look at how the diversity within our school districts, our local school districts, within our community continues to shift, and we want to make sure that we support that. We've put several things forward, we made a very conscious effort this last year as we were bringing on new faculty to recruit faculty that come from a diverse background, so that students feel that they're represented through their faculty. And we're really excited about moving forward and being able to continue to support that and understand that as our community changes, we need to change as well. Another priority for us this next year is to continue to build on our enrollment through, through dual enrollment, not only with the school districts in Sioux Falls, but Harrisburg, T, Madison, Brandon Valley, really making sure that those opportunities grow for all of this, our service area, and that they all have that access to being able to provide opportunities for students' growth and really being successful within, within their high school career and their pathways. The other component that we're now working on, and then starting this year for the first time, is career connections through the Sioux Falls Economic Development Foundation and their support. Great opportunity, they're really reaching out through the school district to engage students, get them focused on industries that are in need. We want to continue to expand our partnerships, we want to continue to grow dual enrollment, make it stronger. We're pursuing NASEP accreditation so that we have that mark of standard and that mark of accreditation. we have that mark of standard and that mark of accreditation saying that this is high rigor, high quality. It isn't just high school students completing a class. It, they're actually at that, that true college level. Our automotive diesel program, working with CTE, growing, developing partnerships there where we're going down and we're, we're engaging with them. Our construction program, to the point where we've actually adapted to using the textbooks that they're using down in CTE. They actually meet our needs much better than what we originally thought. That ability to collaborate and work together. Healthcare, again, working with Sanford and Avera in supporting our EMT course that we're starting, the paramedic program, pushing that out into the high schools. How can they complete these programs? How can they work on that? One of the areas that we're really going to be focused on is the development of advanced manufacturing. President Griggs has really been working diligently, reaching out to contacts nationally. How do we construct the fab lab for K-12? How do we get them focused on this advanced manufacturing robotics and simulation early? And we build so that we can meet those needs within industry here in Sioux Falls. So we're really wanting to expand and provide more. The, the overall growth, we think is going to be very positive. The growth within minority, low-income, first generations opportunities through Career Academy, with the Career Connections, Flashing for Careers and Avera Academy, I think is wonderful. It's getting these students engaged. We're seeing them continue on from high school into Southeast Tech. The other thing we want to do is, again, highlight our partnerships that we have. Our partnerships for us, there are opportunities for growth. Having industry step up and say, wow, this is the program where we want to hire students from. And this is where Southeast Tech is meeting our needs. They're really focused on quality, they're focused on rigor, and they're really providing opportunities for students to enter high-demand career fields and be successful. And as you can see, anything First Premier, Sanford, Avera, home builders, Vicor, Sands, AGC, Smith Builds, the city, South Dakota Dental Association, tremendous partners that we have had over the last year. And we want to continue to grow those partnerships in meeting their needs and meeting their workforce demands as, as our economy grows. Overall, again, we want to thank Dr. Stavum for coming and having that opportunity to speak with us. We invite her to come back and again to her campus and being able to see the hands-on things that we do. It's, it's wonderful to, to see the labs, but when students are actually in there working and you're seeing them being engaged, it provides a different level. And last thing we want to do is kind of reminisce to last year when we actually were able to hold graduation and watch all of our students and celebrate with them versus what the virtual graduation we did this year, but being able to be with them and, and watch their faces and light, eyes light up as they receive their degree. Thank you.
Any questions for Benjamin?
I don't have a question. I just, you know, I was able to attend several of the sector breakfasts. And it was just really fun to watch the engagement of the different people in the community from different businesses who really all have the same goals, trying to achieve, you know, getting qualified candidates to come and how could we work together. And I feel like I saw a lot of light bulbs kind of go off on, we hadn't thought about that, or that's a great plan, and how could we implement that. And I just think we're so lucky to have an organization like Southeast Tech in our community that really serves as that bridge between, like you mentioned, the students who feel like a college or a university is out of reach, but they really don't want to work in just that entry-level job for their, the rest of their life. And so it's a great opportunity for them to be able to gain some skills either on a full-time or a part-time basis. And there's really no better way to introduce them to that than when they're already here in our buildings. And, you know, whether they're at CTE or whether they're doing some of the programs in their home high school, I just think what an awesome opportunity for them to get a taste of what it could be and to have that comfort level of maybe going out to Southeast Tech with their own high school classmates and having that comfort level of knowing that I'm going to ask a question in a college class. I don't want to be intimidated, but I've got my peers around me that are taking that class too. So just so many different ways that we can meet kids' emotional needs of kind of being accepted and giving them the confidence to do that, but then also their academic and financial needs of setting them up to be more successful and contribute more to our community. So I just love the fact that, that list of activities or a list of ideas that had really come from those breakfasts and what the quick turnaround one was, round was, how can we implement that? And, you know, you can take a couple of years to implement, right? That time, maybe the need is gone, or they found a different way to fulfill that. And so by being able to be quick, I think we're able to gain confidence in those supporters, whether it's the financial supporters or the different partnerships that we have to really gain their trust and, and say, wow, we come to you with a need, we know that you're going to address it, and you're going to come back to us and ask us for feedback, and you're going to try to help us fill that. So great report, and I can't wait to see how we can work together. We're all kind of preoccupied with COVID right now, but I hope that none of those things, you know, I hope that, that these activities don't get overshadowed by that because we can't just stop and say we're going to throw our hands up. I think we need to continue moving forward and being able to meet some of these other objectives. So thank you very much for the information.
If you ever have a need for historical context, I had breakfast with Dick Bowie a couple of days ago. And he served as both Dean of Education at Sioux Valley, as well as a school board member, and was part of that evolution of seeing that the technical schools take place in several of those programs such as radiology and LPN programs, respiratory tech, and essentially transferred over to Southeast Tech. So if you're ever in need of that, he's a gentleman that you could reach out to for some of the historical context.
Thank you.
What I love about Southeast Tech is, Carly alluded to it, but so often you will see in higher education that they, they don't want to change and they don't want to adapt and they're kind of stuck in, we've always done it this way and this is how it's going to be, is that you have been so quick in adapting and, and bringing these new programs and making these partnerships with our business partners and our community to provide what they need, which also serves the purpose of providing our students the ability to make a, a great living and stay in the community in the state of South Dakota. So thank you for all you do in doing that because you, it really does fill that. And I think Dr. Griggs said this at our last meeting, maybe Carly, was we need to change the idea that technical school is just your final destination. It can be a, a bridge to opportunities beyond just the two-year degree. It can also lead to, you know, with the transition with DSU to get your, complete a four-year degree, but maybe just do it over time financially and time-wise that you can do it over that so that it can give other opportunities to you.
And that's really our goal. This is, this is just the beginning of a longer journey. And one of the things that we want to install with all of our students and a little portion of faculty is that learning is a lifelong process. It doesn't end because you earned an associate's degree or a bachelor's degree. It, it's always ongoing. And we want to make sure students understand that, you know, as times change, as technology changes, we also have to change. But none of this would have also been possible without the support of the board and your willingness to say, okay, go ahead with your crazy ideas and move forward with them. But without that support, it really becomes kind of, however many ideas we have. We also appreciate your support.
Thank you. Do I have an acknowledgement of the, unless you have something else to add to that report, sorry?
Uh, no, I was just going to mention, when Dr. Stavum was out, first of all, I just want to have you all recognize that within the first two weeks of her starting what would be an incredible new job with multiple responsibilities, obviously, as any entity as large as the Sioux Falls School, that she made time to come out to Southeast Tech and visit with us. And to me, that's, that was hugely encouraging because of the priority that I think our relationship can, can get to in, in terms of, we've, we've done some good things, but again, I think there are more opportunities that, and, and we can do more. We can, we can lift more together than we can individually. So we're very encouraged and thankful for Dr. Stavum's willingness to, to have the conversation. And frankly, we were learning as much, if not more, from her when she was referring to the many initiatives that she started in, in this regard as we went through the slides. So I don't think there was a slide that she wasn't commenting on, that she had done something in Nebraska or state of Washington or some best practice examples out east or whatever. So we do, I, I hope you all realize that that, to me, that is one of the priorities for us this, this coming year is to really focus on what we can do more together in, in terms of some of these programs and pathways. Because in higher ed, that's really what it's all about. And we think there are, there are many options for students, but, you know, four-year and two-years. So not one to the exclusion of the other. And I think Benjamin, Dr. Valdez this week is, last week he met with USD, this week with Augustana. I think there is a much more willingness than, than I have seen, even in my limited time here at Southeast, to partner and collaborate. And I think it's a reflection of the quality of our programs and the quality of our students. So thank you.
Do you have a motion to acknowledge the report on the partnerships with the Sioux Falls School District collaboration?
So moved.
Second.
A motion second. All those in favor of acknowledgement signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign. Anything else to add? If not, I will take a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Second.
A motion second. All those in favor of adjournment signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign. We are adjourned. Thank you.